All right, good morning, everybody. I'll put it over to the regular scheduled board supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, September 18, 2018. Before we do this pledge, we got a direct reminder yesterday that as great a place as Story County is and aims, bad things can still happen here. And I know for a couple of us in the room, it affected family members who are very directly, but it affects all of us indirectly. And I would just ask that we keep in mind, lady and her family, and our thoughts and prayers, and recognize that we've got to be forever vigilant for our community and be thankful that this is an anomaly, something that does shock us, so if something like this can happen in the community. With that, while Laura's still up, we'll go ahead to the board.
I'd like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item, as always, public comment number one, it's now a team for members of the public to comment on items on today's agenda, but if you've got anything else you want to comment on, now's a good time as well. Anybody wishing to do so, come on up to the microphone. Seeing no one moving, the microphone will go to consideration of minutes from September 11.
I would so move as presented.
Motion in a second. Olson.
Aye.
Sheehan.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. No personnel actions today, so we've got claims for September 20.
Thanks, it's listed.
I would like to make an amendment to that and pull the 4A promotions bill for advertising of 220 hours. So I second with that acceptance.
Second with the 4A promotions pulled out of there. Any discussion on the other claims?
None.
Sheehan.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Marty, you willing to make... So we've been through this a couple of times. Laura still has ownership... On paper, Laura still has ownership.
Laura's getting back.
Oh, is it coming back to her?
Yes, it is. But for this particular bill, none of that money goes to me.
All right.
I would move to claim for the 4A, 4A, 4A.
4A promotion.
Olson's asked.
What do the 4As stand for?
Yeah, what do the 4As stand for?
And second.
It's what, whatever the person that I needed in it over to, to the publisher chose to use.
Okay. All right. Sheehan.
Aye.
Olson.
I stand.
Sanders, aye. So 4A claim passes. Consent agenda board.
I move as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Olson.
Aye.
Sheehan. Sanders, aye. Leanne, you are released.
Bye. Take off your hat.
No public hearing items today. Additional items we're going to discuss and correct regarding our story content. Leanne, hurry.
Good morning.
How are you this morning?
Well, I'm just laughing, but I thought you said we ended.
No, you are absolutely not released. We need you.
Sorry, I don't have that chair. For once, I don't have a power.
How about that? But you've got to have a nice little spreadsheet, Laura. You're going to be under oath if you don't have a spreadsheet.
Oh, okay. What I did on today's agenda was, let me back up. So every, like, three or four weeks prior to, we get, come up upon the deadline for publishing our story. I have this little layout sheet, I think Laura she created originally, that I send around to all the board members and internal board supervisor staff, to get an idea of articles that I've thought of over the time period for the upcoming edition. And really, what kind of prompts the ideas I come up with is outreach I do with elected officials, the front heads, too, to see what they may or may not want included in our story. So I did that, and this particular issue I had set aside, like, I don't know, economic development issue, whatever we want to call it, because, one, selfish on my part, I don't have the urban renewal program running this fall, I have a strategic plan and a C2C plan. So I had thought that would fit nicely, that I could devote some attention to this, but our A's materials would be developed because of the ABCs were on there. So that's just some history. So I sent this around, but came back for additional, a lot of additional items, which are great, and I love the idea that I just, we need to have staff need to session from the board.
So I didn't have any additional items. I'm assuming the additional items came from one place. Is that a fair assumption?
Um, staff added some, too.
Okay.
Internal board supervisor staff. So what I placed on the board's agenda today is that outline of the additional information. I did not scan in the copies, or the handwritten copy, I typed it on it, so there may be some details. Originally, if you look under Articles, it was the first four months when first by, and I did add the Story County Economic Development Review to try and keep with the economic development theme. So with that, what we have on the potential articles is definitely more than the spread that we're allowed, the whole page, two pages in our story, in the sun, and actually would exceed the internal distribution size, too. This would probably be, this would be a likely need to add. So, again, I'm here today, need some direction from the board. One, would we include this go-around? Two, is there a different approach for establishing what goes in Articles that we need to internally develop, or direction for me to make sense out, but it's...
Sure, go ahead. Tell me this, how many of these bullets can we get to before we've got too much?
I did an audit of what we've done since we've done the front of paper, and we can give it...
That is fine, but flip it here, Leanne, first, and then...
Generally, I think we can go six to eight, depending on the magnitude or the, what the feature article is, if I remember correctly. How large that is, what pictures we include.
Impact all that. But say somewhere in the half dozen to seven or eight, maybe, if we need to. Okay, go ahead, Laura.
I was just going to say, I actually, um, seven to nine has been what we've done, a major, major, what I call elements. So right on time.
Superb. Okay.
Thought we might answer your questions.
Sure. Laura's, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, as it kind of occurred to me, as you were looking at a special section then on economic development, okay? So one of my concerns in general philosophy here is that this is a newsletter and a general purpose newsletter, and given that we're limited to two pages now, unlike when we were online, because I did go back and I did the audit all the way back to the first edition, okay? And so when you're limited to what we do in the newspaper business called real estate, all right, you have to be more conscious about what you put in and the priorities about how you list them, all right? And so then the next thing I took a look at is not only what is, what's the purpose here, kind of a, to inform the public, but is this not the purpose for us to inform the public about the county's, Story County's activities, programs, projects, budget, et cetera? And that we, that given our space, that the first thing we narrow in on is what is allowed or what should be included or not. And when it was online, there were some instances, there were two instances where economic development staff was through at the time. He provided two articles, and they were about development occurrences that we were not directly involved with. At the same time, there was, for two or three years, at least two years at least, there were large pieces about a freedom flight, or ads, or announcements of events. So, and then once again, that's not a story company activity directly. Brett helps with it, but it had its separate, I understand, it had its separate organizational mall, whether it is C3, I'm looking at Deb, because she might know.
But, so can we just stop right there and talk a little about this premise that you're coming at this with? Because I think I disagree with your basic premise, and we better get there first. So, Leanne, remind us, this has been probably a couple of years ago that you and I first came up with the concept of getting a newsletter into everybody's hands, and when you met with the publisher of the TRIB and the SUN, just to talk conceptually about what would happen. And then soon after that, Supervisor Olson was elected and came in and was handed off, rightly handed off to you to go finish off the negotiation to go. But that original concept, as I recall, was, here's what's happening in Story County, here's what Story County residents need to know, or would be benefited by knowing what's going on in Story County. I don't believe that the original concept ever said it had to be specifically tied to this is what's happening in this building, or in the justice center, or Story County. It was more broad than that, right?
Okay. So, all right, thank you for that, for you when you went top. Because coming back to not only the real estate, but the other factor that comes in, versus what you were doing online, is we're now paying $3,000 of taxpayer money per edition. So all of a sudden here, what are we giving the taxpayers? If we go beyond our boundaries of what we ourselves are providing or active partners in, do we open up, as we're starting to promote people who can promote themselves, and can promote themselves from a variety of private sources, like run an ad in the newspaper, like get an article themselves in the newspaper? And that's where the economic development thing comes down, to where, how much are we involved in it versus how much are we paying taxpayer dollars to do something that can be promoted or announced independently, that while it may yield somewhat interest to our taxpayers and the public, it's not overriding. Now, if you'll let me continue, because it's only one concept, okay? So then I'm taking a look at what I can do with this, so I, I worked up for you guys, okay? And there you go. And then also, jumping ahead a little bit, took the list on our story. And Leanne, if you have any, I actually did have any. And we can kind of run through, but the one that says communication device at the beginning, all right, we may have the purpose, you're saying the purpose is not quite the same, I tried to state the purpose. But then what you do is we take a look at what the base, the core concept of hierarchy of coverage, or hierarchy of inclusion. And so you come down here, and the core communications, you start with anything that is going to occur during the publication period, or it's called a shelf life, all right? So that's stuff we want to announce that are going to happen. So I listed here, like, critical updates, upcoming major milestones, events and deadlines, timely evergreens. And you'll see on my paper that behind, and I wrote in a different color, what those things that are on Leanne, our list, if you will, that fit into those categories. Then after you've taken care of everything that's moving forward, you then take a look at what has occurred in the previous publication period that we didn't cover before. And then we've got then the critical updates, the functions, the milestones achieved, recap of things, and evergreens. You're going to see the word evergreen here twice, of it, what's going forward to occur and what's coming after to occur. And once again, evergreens, can anyone tell you?
Does bring me one, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I printed out a thing eight. So evergreens are those kind of topics that can be adapted, can be adapted, or they're always applicable, you just go ahead and you provide the so what, why are we doing that now? Who, what, when, where, how, so what? That's the determination about what comes in. Then you take a look at what provides for your layout balance, the graphics, those standalone photos with a formative cut line. And then you go down to fillers, and then you go down to your scratches or holes, or what's saying, this can go in a future edition, because it seems to be more timely, more appropriate. And if we want to inform our readers, we want to inform the public, what we want to do is include things that they are more likely to want to read and look at and absorb the information, if they are tied to a particular season, a particular activity, a particular milestone. So then I went to this our story here, and you'll notice that I took everything and I wrote on there. So now, the first two items, the economic development announcements, and the demographic information, I wrote scratch by, because they didn't fit that my definition of what would be something directly related to what we, our staff, do, how our budget is expended. You notice by the demographics, though, I also put there possibly a filler. And that could be because it is applicable in Story County about some demographics of who we are, et cetera, so it certainly could be used as a graphic filler. Then, and you'll see that the first one that is listed in bold, or listed in dark, for the urban renewal projects, the TELP. And my thought on that is, we, there's another concept, is you don't want to write about something you've just written about in the previous couple of editions, unless there's a new significant change, you've hit a new milestone. So if the trail, it looks like we're going to be opening, we've had a dedication date set, by the time that Leanne goes to press, definitely TELP is appropriate to go in there. If we don't have those set, perhaps then we need to go and look at it being in the winter quarter instead, and having that be something that already happened. The next one I scratched, home-based programming, is we already did it in the spring of 2018. So Leanne, if there's something that is new about it, okay?
Have the president and you, testimonial, you...
And have they agreed to that already? Okay, so then that can come back on, all right? So then I took a look at the SEDG overview, and once again, I'm looking for that so what? So I put, if we've dispersed in that fiscal year 19 funds, which I think we did approve in the last plane, not this one, but two, then that makes a nice entry into, look, this is what we've done for so many years. Now, number two, VA supermarkets listed at number two, it is, of course, occurring during the shelf life of this publication, and we've got a location tape on it. Number one is the auditor's reminder I want to bring to the polls, okay? Thirteenth of Blood Drive, if we have place, obviously, I've got more numerals out here than we have places for we know, but it's a good visual element. Partners Fall Festival, usually can get some good photos out of that, so maybe a good photo, if we've got the room. The 280th Bridge, I put at number eight, that's already been repaired, but it was kind of unique how Darren solved it, and it's a good, possibly a good story. It could be, you know, it's going to lose its interest after the snow comes, right? People are going to forget about it, all right? Then the recorder and auditor enhancing software, if it's ready to go. I put on the coop cog exercises because of the Marshall Town at six, emergency management at seven. The three blue moons on the bottom are things that I realized I thought of later, after the list didn't go around, but it's mobile licenses, so at least, that's a big deal for, I believe, the recorder, so at least a couple of paragraphs. And then purchase of evergreen, of the squad cars is what I call an evergreen, it's just we approved it, okay? And then promotions in the county attorney's office, because we try to include all the departments, you know, and so a lot of the legal activity, either it wouldn't be appropriate for this quarterly newsletter, but the fact of the promotions. So that's how I lean about it, to take a look at, about what would be important to include in the newsletter. And so that, so then, yeah, we're kind of back to what would be appropriate when we bring in something from one of our associates, partners, or whatever.
Yeah, so I appreciate the work you put in here. So a couple of the assumptions that I think you're making, and I think I don't agree with. So first of all, remember, we've got two separate newsletters, right? We've got one that goes out to the public, and we've got one that stays internal. I mean, I think you're conflating those two a little bit. Items that are completely appropriate to be internal are not necessarily appropriate to be external, advice personally. Second thing is, this idea that we're only going to report, well, so if we're only going to report on the things that are absolutely Story County government, you can't put emergency management in there, because they're not Story County government, they're separate from Story County government, but yet you've got them in here. I think you are dead on the money on the VA supermarket, that's got to be included, that's timely, it's public, it's something going out there. And if we don't start and end the issue from the auditor's office, talking about an upcoming election, and what, you know, technically what you have to do, I think we're missing there. The idea that we would put, so Blood Drive, actually, I see that as an internal thing, here's what we did, but I don't see it as part of this, but the overall premise that I'm hearing you say is, you're trying to view this newsletter as a newspaper, where granted, you've got, I think you call it real estate, limited real estate, or limited property, or whatever, and you're trying to get as media everything in there. I think that the basics of this, this is not a newspaper, this is much more of a magazine with special editions, and here's the roads and bridges special edition, and here's the, here's what's happening economically in Story County edition, and here's those kind of things. And, you know, anybody who watches us, it's not, it's probably not all that instructive that you and I would view things a little differently, but that's my viewpoint as we come about.
I would like to come back to what should we realistically pay for as a tax, for the taxpayers? What is, in fact, our, our criteria goals as opposed to when we get into really competing with private communication companies? Because, and let's talk about it from a special section standpoint. So special sections are used in the private industry, normally they want it tied to advertising, they witness, we don't have that problem, right? We're looking at what is of such import, what is such a major milestone, what is such a significant change that we would want to focus a little bit on, or a lot, basically devote what would be the majority of the real estate to a particular concept, activity, change? And so if we want to go down the road of special sections, certainly for Leanne's job as editor, that's going to require a different... Or if you buy, if you give me that, there are some things that are going to have to go into it, because they're upcoming. Let's take, you know, look at that first category there, upcoming, all right? So then we take a look at why, and at what period of time would it be most to incorporate a special section, right? Why economic development now, Leanne?
Well, the heels of the announcements and the more action, I mean, I knew that that was coming, or like, the work's being done, but, you know.
So you feel, so you feel us talking about a resolution, saying, yeah, okay, that seems good, but we're not fuckers.
All right, I think you understood what we did last week, Laura, so if you'd like to revisit that phrase, I'd appreciate it.
All right, okay. Which phrase, fuck yourself?
Oh, yeah, what we did last week, you know, like, it was a no big deal. You're talking about five hundred new jobs, and I think, how many multiples of a hundred million in construction there? I'm not aware of, but, you know, when you hope of that, I think you're, I think you're trying to drive narrative that you're almost diminishing what we did as a body last week.
Okay. What I view, what we did last week, we said we were in support of it, but we don't have a major...
That's what we left it.
That's right. So why does that generate a special section? Where's your lead? Give me your example, if I want to say that.
Well, let me take, let me do the cardboard thing here. I'm looking for a wow factor. I'm looking for something that is going to make me want to pick that up and read it. I am not going to get driven into the weeds, talking about, you know, column issues, private, you know, publications versus what we do from such an esoteric, high level, that I'm just, I want people to read what we offer them. We were, when you say we provide public dollars, we inform the public, are we giving something that somebody would pick up and consume?
But what, what are they really consuming? We, you know, we...
Here's, I, here's what we did.
I think it sounds like opportunistic.
Here's what we...
Okay? I think this sounds opportunistic, but you're like...
But, you know, we get mail delivered to our desk every day, and when you get the Ames Bulletin thing, I know, it's one of those things that you show up at your desk and read it, like, the county, the, the magazine that we get, you just think you read it however you have the time to. To me, it was just time and the information, I am not trying to ascribe any nefarious attachment to it. It is just our story. I am not, it's not lost on me, and it's been shared in forms I've been, or present for and participated in. Two-thirds of the population is Ames, three-quarters of the valuation is Ames, and if it's Ames a story, it's the oversized presence, it doesn't have Story County's story.
So I dig, I dig, so we just, we just got the full fella, Laura, so this is entirely valid. Laura's, Laura's, amazing enough, you're not even on the ballot, but you view something happening in your member as the driving force behind it, as I didn't even consider that. But you are trying, reading really hard, to make sure that there's no good news at all in a newsletter that we sent out, because you're afraid it might reflect positively on the way that you're going, and Laura's, you ought to, you ought to be ashamed, that's ridiculous.
Are you going to be ashamed?
That's ridiculous.
Accusing me of that.
You just said it, you just said it.
But we're assuming taxpayer money, and I'm questioning why this is coming out now, and I'm asking the question that editors ask in not only newspapers and journals...
You're not the editors.
But we have an editor who I think is still at a learning stage, and is being overseen by someone that doesn't have that...
So you, so now you are, so now you're hyper managing it. I thought we had gotten past this.
I, sir, I did not justify spending taxpayers' money on any special section.
To tell people in Story County what's going on in Story County? Are you kidding me?
No, because I don't think, I have to say, what's going on in Story County, it's what's going on in Swiss Story County government. That is my point. Where do we end this?
This was the only Story County ever, every, everything we've talked about, it's always Story County ever.
So we, so we've got a lead that says that we, we did two resolutions in support of two economic development. Where are you taking it from there, Leanne?
Well, by the time we're ready for publication, the state should have taken action.
I think it's this Friday.
Yes, this Friday. Yeah, we are about to.
Yes, then it's this Friday.
So the leads will be drafted by ABC.
See, and that's another concern I have about ABC.
They work for us.
We have one in, yeah, they do work for us, but I'm not sure that we're ready on this yet, even on that one, because they hear on one project, or do they hear on both of them?
I would call it.
Well, you know where I stand?
We're prepared.
Well, and I also just completely want to refute about that this is all about the election.
You're the one who said it.
I would be irresponsible if I did not bring it up at the table about the timing of this. And how is this, now, how is this good taxpayer money?
Okay, yeah, throw that in. All right, so what I'm, what I'm hearing, Leanne, first of all, I think it's ridiculous that we're on this air to board and try to hyper manage something you're putting together. But what I'm hearing is, let's move ahead as you originally intended, and we can take a vote on this, because I'm just telling you what I'm hearing. Let's move ahead, I think that absolutely things like the supermarket, and all the, any reminders come from the auditor ought to be part of this, because they are absolutely timely, and I'm sure you would have included them without this exhaustive list. And let's just, let's move ahead with, as you, I think you laid this, this idea out five months ago, if I'm not mistaken, is that right? Is this kind of out in the...
You actually laid this out, I would, I would...
Five months ago, I brought her the original ABC, and I said, hey, that's something that might work out well in a newsletter. And that's it. That just left it with her. And we went through two other newsletters with nothing, so I was encouraged to see that you were by going to be included, but I view it strongly as your, this is your deal, this is what we've asked you to do, you hand...
I would like to point out, though, that as I audited these, our stories online and then moving forward, there's no question that Leanne has become better, more experienced at it, there's no question that they're looking better, that there's a good content. So I'm pleased with the growth you've had, okay? I just don't know that you had maybe considered what special sections really mean in this, and how actually to assess what would go into a newsletter paid for by public dollars.
Okay, good. Marty, thoughts?
I'm going to take anybody's good story, and consider it was formatted in a way, it was quick and easy read, I accept it, I believe that his story counts. I don't think everybody has the ability that we do, necessarily, against the magazine that we did. Now here, price to be for the, ah, Ames, this is the most...
You're talking about Iowa counties, or the internal newsletter?
No, 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 the, the, the information we're talking about there, the economic development announcements as presented by ABC through the Ames Bulletin Board Magazine, and it's not necessarily provided out there in a way that it consumes out here. And if we are offering on a quarterly basis, well, that's their story, but this is their number, this is the numbers that have been generated.
So how, how do we go forward with this? And I am asking this, because envision how far do we go? When the material was online, there was actually a full page...
And it's not necessarily provided out there in a way that it consumes out here. And if we are offering up on a county basis, well, that's their story, but this is their number, this is the numbers that have been generated.
So how, how do we go forward with this? And I am asking this because envision how far do we go? When the, uh, material was online, there was actually a full page on the Cameron Estates edition and the contact information was the contact Cameron Estates, Kirk Freegird and Cameron Estates. Where do we draw the line now that, you know, our story when it was online did not add one single dollar to the budget. It did, now we're spending twelve thousand dollars a year. So where do we draw this line?
You're so good with the money you talked about. LeAnn is evolving and you feel that the product that she's providing, and we're doing that for her last.
Doing better, but we still have, we still learn. And I think this is a moment right here.
You are in a sausage making mode right now, Loris. And I know you come at this from a journalistic approach. I'm a little more pedestrian about how I want to, I want to see it, how I have comfort and funding it, you know, what I'd like to see provided to the public. I'm not necessarily going to get caught up. To me, the conversation turns to the fact that I got no problem with that. I just want to know what we're going to put in addition to me keeping it within the size of, uh, the newsletter itself. I'm waiting for this conversation to end so I can sit here and have a conversation and we'll be built for you. So, you guys get there.
Mr. Chair, first.
We'll, we'll get to you in just a minute. Um, LeAnn, other thoughts? So, so is it possible to build what you were planning on building? And I'll just point out, as your job is, as states in your job description, you're going to build what you're going to build. Is it possible to add the information, uh, that I think has been requested by the Auditor's Office and I think the VA Supermarket? Loris rightly knows it's going to be in a different location. Can you build those things in and still build the kind of issue you were thinking of building?
I think so. I mean, I, I have not started a layout because I don't want to get through today, so I'm re-inventing, I think, but I, I think maybe in the calendar sections or community events, um, I would add, and still be licensed that we hope to.
Perfect. Okay, good. Linda?
Thank you. Linda, work it and I'll be brief. If you are concerned about something that was brought up, which is using county taxpayer money potentially to look, use as campaigning or something that may be perceived as campaigning in an election year, a very easy solution would be to delay the publication of this edition by two weeks. And I request that you do that because I do believe that it does give an advantage to incumbency. Well, no, there's an advantage to incumbency. I know it gives a huge advantage to incumbency. This could. So I'm requesting you delay publication for two weeks. And if not, I will be discussing this with you.
I think that's outstanding. So the only two people campaigning here right now are you and Loris.
Excuse me, and I object to that. I agree.
Okay, you could object, but now it's my turn.
Over two decades experience here.
I'll let you talk all the way through. Now, you let me talk and you can object and do whatever you want. The reality is that this is, this is unbelievable. So the stance is that if Story County says anything positive at all, somehow that might benefit somebody in office. So let's just not say anything positive at all, even if it's reality. Let's not take something that was, has been on the burners for five months and publish it at a time that we, for the first time in our history, we've got four different projects at the state that are getting ready to get approved this Friday. It's never happened before, but we do, we do. It's Story County, Loris. If it's, if it's happening in Boone County, then you're wrong. And as far as this idea of campaigning, I promise you this, my name, my picture will not be anywhere in this thing. His name, his picture won't be anywhere in this thing. It, that has not, that has not even ruled the intent. And if we're worried about the dollars we're spending, there's a simple answer to that. Let's just do away with the whole publication and move. Loris, you were a huge advocate of doing this publication. I, I believe you want to tell the people of Story County what's going on in Story County. If that's not what we're doing here, then we can have the conversation. But this idea that putting out some good news at whatever the scheduled date is, is somehow changing? So Linda, what I'm hearing you say is that's fine if you put it out, just don't put it out there. Does that make any sense at all?
Excuse me, I was offering what I thought would be a simple solution. If that does not seem to be what you want to do, that's not within my.
I want to let LeAnn do her job. That's all I want.
I would like to make sure that LeAnn is, has the proper skills and training to be able to do the evaluation on this that would have come up maybe five years, five months ago with the thought about the timing.
Loris, are we going to do an employee evaluation, right?
No, I am just making a, a statement here about, um, how we always can help all of our employees.
I, I believe that LeAnn has done a spectacular job with our story. I get more good comments on what goes, how she does with our story.
I think she does a good job too.
Perfect.
This is new territory.
This is new territory.
Can I just get Dr. Shawn with his position?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can we all agree on the VA Supermarket and Auditors? What's written in the polls?
Absolutely, but can we just agree to let LeAnn build the issue that, that she got laid out here and include pertinent information? Because I heard her say snowmobiles as well.
I would, before we get any further, and I know I don't say too much on this one, but I just ripples my nails. We have eight people here to check in. I mean, a lot of people don't know how's this campaigning to be this quarterly. Eight people checking on this, what were the comments? You know, by eight people, I mean, did you have people saying, fine, or, but I, I, I didn't. I only see it when it touches my desk and I sign off.
On the comments, I did not, again, I think I should. First one, and I don't recognize the rolling game writing. I think I know what you're doing, but I don't. Um, first one says, good. Second comment says, the board may need to discuss purpose and scope of our story. And.
That's fine.
Third one, great numbers. For Ames, looks fine. Um, then under the articles, the additions under, um, adding the VA Supermarket. And then under the economic development announcements, which are to be developed by A B C, limited only, but they don't fill, don't fill with county information. Uh, so my comment is, um, the bullet point regarding the smart choice booklet, um, granted to Story County. And I added the bullet from Story County I commented about in the group, and it showed to Loris for you about it. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, it's an evolving thing. We do this each and every time that people see a finished product. I guess now that they have a little bit of an idea, I know what you thought as you sold Red High in the process of spending money. I mean, that's one of those things that you championed and you brought us along to do and we're doing it. We're clearly doing it better than we brought it out of the ground. I don't know what, we're not two point oh, not three point oh, I don't know where we're at, but we're doing better. I think we had no expectation, nobody articulated the fact that she wasn't capable of doing this.
And I know since she wasn't capable, I said we.
Well, you said, I think earlier, and I would ask you when we get done, you see me, and I think you said she hasn't had the training or the expertise, and I might not be using the most descriptive word here, but I think that she has the willingness to do this. I would not point to anything that she's done to say, okay, it was good, acceptable, and we liked it, but we have the ability to improve it. And I see us doing that. And I think this is a journey, not a destination.
If it's a journey, right?
This one quarterly is not going to make a break Story County. I don't necessarily get caught up on the political side of it. That's part of the staple component of my life. And I'm going to sit there and say, the information provided is good news.
And pertinent to the people of Story County.
To the majority of the people in Story County, that is their story.
So in the future, moving forward here, we would be looking at all kinds of outside information that should be pertinent if it's speaking of the deal.
We have the ability to take it up and make it our story.
Which is the name of the publication to make this?
Here's what I know.
Okay, uh, so, uh, and, and Loris, I know exactly where you stand. So Marty, I'm asking you, um, I believe we ought to let LeAnn go with what she had originally built in with, with the acknowledgement that any pertinent information, and there's some pertinent information listed here, right? That's the, the VA Supermarket and auditor reminders and, and if you say snowmobiles is something that needs to be in there. But trust LeAnn to do exactly what she does. She's gotten a lot of comments, um, I, I think, I think you do a fantastic job with this, LeAnn. Marty, you good with that?
I am fine. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just sitting there, I don't care what the list, you know, I was interested to hear how many people thought we had, or what the numbers were. We had six to eight, you had seven to nine. I'm saying I'm just trying to, uh, line out what I thought could possibly, you know, weigh in depth, but I do follow on except what I, you know, we do that all the time, that is what kind of the intro story.
Okay, I, once.
You know, I've, I've just, once again, it's just like she brings it to us in the sense that as she has worked it out, puts it on our desk, we read to it, we comment on it and we push it back. Or we take it to somebody else's desk, look at what I put out, you can read my comments and everybody else's. And then we go to publication.
I, I, yeah, I've never viewed this as our publication bill, as LeAnn's publication bill. We, along with others, get to make comments on it and then it's, and it's her responsibility to build it. Clearly this was a unique situation in that she, um, felt like she was getting some huge direction from one of the three of us.
Excuse me, this was a unique situation and new direction of territory and advice from us.
What new direction of territory? It was building a newsletter, same as we've done, how many have we done now? Eight, nine?
Since I've come on the board, this is the first one where we've incorporated.
No, 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 she was asking how many we've done, not what's on the agenda. How many have we done?
Okay, you asked totally quickly.
Yeah, how many, how many issues we put out? Eight?
Okay, and it's not important how many. My point is, this isn't our first one. This is not abnormal to things that, that we would, we would go with. The numbers that you're talking about and the items that you're talking about putting out are going to be of interest to the people of Story County and it's about what's going on in Story County. And Story County Government is very clearly involved in those things. Is that enough direction? Okay?
Um, okay, I guess you know how I, what I think and what I feel about this and direction there. And we may afford, this is a particular edition, this is how it was listed on the agenda, maybe there may go forward, uh, thinking about really what is the intent. Because I, because I, I would like a, a formal vote and it's not on here today, about really what is the intent of this? Because what I supported was a newsletter putting out, it was about the operations of Story County and the people who work for Story County. All right.
Before you move on, if you'd like to bring that back here, I would, yes, I would see if we could set some framework up that we could vote on and maybe we not necessarily.
I may not win, but at least I would like a very clear, there's a hearing, seeing concept, just differences.
As always, of course, anything you want on the agenda. I don't think there's ever been a time when you've been, you wanted something on the agenda that we have on the agenda. That will continue forward. You bring forward whatever you want. But, but I'll go back to where you and I, you and I started this conversation. I was in the room when the, the initial concept of this came up. You weren't. Um, I remember what the initial concept of this was. And what we're talking about doing here not only fits in with that initial concept, it fits in with everything we've done, um, since the concept came out. So, um, okay, so LeAnn, you have your direction. Good job. Thank you. And we'll move on. And no agency reports, they departmental reports. Uh, you don't look anything like Keith Morgan, but Emergency Management's Morgan, more or less than this Keith Morgan, but the illustrious Morgan.
No, I don't have a count of points. The computer gets a break today, so it'll light up. Right? Um, as you may know, software report, we've been extremely busy, um, since our last report. We had two significant rate events that did end up leading to about a half million dollars worth of, of infrastructure damage to Story County from flash flooding events. Because Story County conducted, conducted an effective damage assessment, uh, we did receive a presidential disaster declaration for public infrastructure on August twentieth. The governor is in the process of appealing the individual assistance program, which is for households that were affected, um, is appealing that presidential denial of that assistance. The recovery process has started with jurisdictions applying for, um, their, their projects for repairs. We have taken a lot of lessons learned from our neighbors this summer with Oak and Marshall County. But more main learned lesson are, we need a good volunteer management process. We need good solid degree management plans. Training damage assessment teams are critical, again, going back to getting those presidential declarations, um, and state declarations, having those folks in the training respond quickly is critical. And then of course, continuity of government, continuity of operations plans that we have found, um, through discussions. Keith and Marty met with Marshall County folks. Marty, do you have anything you want to share about that?
We're following, um, just trying to sync how we are taking this all up into the picture. And trying to get four people's calendars to align is truly hard and it would seem this is a thing. But Bill Patton's, uh, extended the opportunity to come over here in the day that was going forward to give us a little bit more of a recap. As they, they go from the immediacy of the event to the fact that, okay, this is what we have done, this is, the timelines evolved and what we have learned. So that will be an ongoing saga because clearly there are bringbacks that Keith, you know, he's talked to you, I'm sure, a link upon it. He and I have visited on it too. And I think that as we do COCOG, that we sit there and say that, okay, if, and when you speculate on an event, you just think, oh, why, this is what would happen. But when you talk with people who actually went through something like that or down negative, realize that the best laid plans may not be your best go back.
Yeah, so I think a lot of those lessons learned from the conversations that Marty and Keith have in Marshall County are lessons learned from our folks in Oak County. Our hope is that the things identified in previous two COCOG workshops and along with lessons learned from our neighbors, that those can be incorporated and we've got recent discussion points going into the November, um, the last workshop in November of the COCOG plan. Some of our planning efforts, Keith and Safeguard Iowa, um, met with the Ames Chamber and Ames Economic Development to discuss about developing a public and private partnership for disaster response here in Story County. It would be something that's very similar to already what Safeguard Iowa does, but we would be looking to develop something specifically with Story County business that would help us with disaster resilience, um, enhance communications and increase the capability to green our business. Business and industry the last several years has really stepped up to the plate, especially through Safeguard Iowa, to offer assistance to communities and counties in times of disaster. Um, Rick, I know you attended the A B C meeting. Did you have any observations or?
I thought it was outstanding. I thought it was really well put together and, um, exactly what that group of business leaders need to hear, uh, the resources were available and, um, you know, Keith showed good at those things.
Um, our training, one of our huge training accomplishments this last quarter, Keith and I both completed the FEMA, uh, basic academy, which was four weeks spread over four months. The nice thing about this academy is it was not just emergency managers. We had folks from, um, different disciplines, from law enforcement, we had folks from the DOTs, we had folks from DOTs from other states. Um, so it was really beneficial, not only for the information that we were bringing back from the program itself, but to get a really good perspective on how other states do some of their operations was hugely beneficial. Uh, we also drilled our own emergency management COCOG plan. Um, since our last report, we have a backup emergency operations center at Iowa State University. We went over and drilled that, which took, meant setting everything up, estimating if we could, the time it would take and if we could get on the Iowa State systems. So that is a really good partnership that we've been able to develop. So should this building or E O C ever become not available, um, we have a backup that can be activated, um, quickly.
And, and I just want to understand, so important and we so appreciate Iowa State University allowing this. So, so our backup E O C before this was a empty room, right? And so if we were going to activate this empty room, so something happens, this building can't use our E O C, we would have gone in and we would have had, uh, no infrastructure at all in the beginning. We would have been setting everything up, uh, at a time when clearly if that's where you are, every second counts, right? And now with having access to Iowa State, which is a state of the art emergency operations center.
Yes, it is.
Uh, allows us that if, if bad ever does happen here, we can be able to run it in, in minutes, uh, rather than hours. It's really strong and, uh, enormous appreciation of Iowa State University.
Our training, exercise and planning workshops. One of the things that came up was incident command system training for public officials. That is where Keith is today. He's actually teaching an ICS 300 level class today. One thing that we found was very impressive, 20 of the 30 folks who signed up to class are from Story County. So what's really going to be nice about this is we're using a incident, Keith's using a incident very similar to the I-35 pilot we had this winter. But the nice thing with having so many local folks, they're going to be able to have that local focus and apply those principles that they're going to learn today if we would have incidents in the future. So we were pretty pleased to see 20 folks from Story County agencies that are in this class today. Our volunteer organizations have been very critical to our operations since our last report. Story County Amateur Radio Emergency Service folks, or the HAM folks, have been evaluating capabilities of the new command and communications trailer that was purchased from Minas Gavine County with donations from a pipeline. We're currently working to develop our operating guides, our policies, procedures. We have had discussions with the PSAPs here in Story County about what possible communication capabilities they would like integrated into the trailer, and just really working to get this trailer up and ready for what we need to do locally. We couldn't have done this in the amount of time that we've done it without them. Our additional volunteer organizations we're working with currently, the Iowa Chief Club, who's also a member of the Coalition for Disaster Recovery, has stepped up to help with some pump refurbishment that we have. We're working with CDR to develop strategic planning to straighten their network. Salvation Army has, we're working with them to define their local capabilities and how they may be able to assist our program, continuing operations with Red Cross. Our Star One Search and Rescue Team, which did assist yesterday with the incident in Ames. And they also assisted with the incident in Altoona with the missing hiker. Those folks have been here volunteering in our county for 25 years. They are, all of these volunteer organizations that we work with are huge in making the emergency management program affordable. There's a lot of donated time that they give for free that really do help. Our way ahead, we're going to be working on the Story County Emergency Operations Basic Plan this year. One of the things we're really going to look at is NIMs compliance and for all jurisdictions across Story County. The one nice thing is a lot of those classes can be done online now. But that's something that you will see coming down the pipe this year. School emergency planning, the AEA is starting their different programs around the state to start getting the schools in their planning cycles to come in line with the changes to Iowa Code. We will do another exercise of the I-35 closure plan this year. One thing that will be different is integrating the Rapid Action Teams for Sheltering, the RACs, as we call them, that are associated with Story County CDR. And so we'll be curious to see if there's any other changes with that. Now that the disaster stuff has kind of slowed down, knocked on wood, we are starting to be able to get back to somewhat normal operations and get a lot of these administrative things done that needed to be set aside during why we were going through this summer. So that's real quick, very synopsis of everything we've been doing, and I don't have any questions.
Rick, so two things that, and I appreciate the brevity, but two things that you didn't note that are part of the report that I think are worth pointing out just because it's really, really nice that Story County is in the position for it. And I say all the time, we want emergency management to be ready for anything and never have to do anything, right? We want it to be break glass in case of emergency and to be ready to go, but never have to break glass. First one I'm going to call out is LeAnn Ardo. So LeAnn has put the work that we've done, led by Keith and Melissa, with LeAnn, putting a lot of effort into it, is our COOCOG plan. What we built in our COOCOG and now our training of that. And in fact, it's so good that the Iowa Association of Counties is using our template. I think, LeAnn, with your help, if I'm not mistaken, to build a template that the other 98 counties could utilize in building some version of COOCOG. I think that is worth noting for Story County. And the second one is, now Keith Morgan and I have been invited twice to separate occasions. One, we spoke to all the emergency management coordinators in the state of Iowa just about how things are going here in Story County and how we build or fill. And the second one, Loris, you were there for the second one at ISAC. It was supposed to be me, but Keith had to, was called away, actually with FEMA.
It was for the disaster...
And so me and the director of the, or the president of the Association for Emergency Management gave the presentation. But we're talking about what's going on in Story County. Melissa, it's a huge credit to you and Keith that we're in that position. Absolutely. And thank you guys so much for the work that you put in. Questions for Melissa?
Thank you for spending Fourth of July down in Poc County learning. I see that as they got the blood waters that we got there at the end of June rolled up, and you have to see how they handle it. Can't say enough about planting this team on the HAM radio side of things, but they would have been here with that invite here. You don't realize the donation of time, efforts, and their own equipment. They bring their own equipment.
Yes, they do.
And it is costing only how much, but then it's their people that's in the parade. It's their only, looking for the opportunity to serve. And we have brought it to the table, and thanks to our EIC, he not only speaks, but he's asked us to speak. And you, all the emergency response people that are there, only get to learn what his organization has to have because he shared it for us.
Good. Good question, comments? Absolutely. All right, no other reports. Public forum number two, opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on this agenda, can't take any action, but we might in the future. Anybody wishing to do so? Seeing no one moving to the microphone, there is our Simon's Loris.
Okay, I was invited, I have been invited on Saturday morning representing the county. And you too are welcome also, but it was Andrew Allen kind of extended the implication as a person who has been sober for over 22 years now and recovering.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And also, because I sit on the CFR board, Family Resources Board, that deals with the physician issues also. But Iowa State and YSS are holding a tailgate for college students in recovery. That's going to be a, huh, at Maple. I just saw that look. We had this discussion with juvenile justice. And the reality is, it's very difficult for students who have been through treatment or who have found sobriety after struggling to come to a college campus and then keep their sobriety without feeling, the only way to do it is to isolate themselves from other students and activities. So that begins at 8:00 on Saturday morning at the Maple Shelter at Brookwood Park in Ames, which I think is as close as they could get to have that. So, yeah, you're welcome to come on down, okay?
Great, you're welcome.
And in aging resources meets this week. We've got the safety committee meeting this week. So I look forward to both of those discussions. Aging resources takes pretty much most of the summer off. And now getting ready to head into the legislative season. And Todd continues to work on moving us forward and identifying the possibly hazardous parts of our job or we're at higher risk, and also to pull emergencies together. So I think those are the two big meetings that are three biggest things up here.
Good, Marty?
Just looking forward, starting the form portion of our lives tonight with the NAMI Arch Forum over in Ames. It is gratifying to tell you, you think that when we do our jobs up here, we do it in the back. You know, we notice as we see the account or they watch our videos and it's really positive at that, and it's really love. But then again, you go back to the people that, you know, see what we do, listen to what we do, and they pay attention. So we just got out of a big overarching discussion in regards to how we inform the public. I was watching, and then as we give them the means to inform themselves, and I think we should take every opportunity. So it's nice to know that I think that Story County is a good one, and very confident in it. And it's nice to hear it because you know that, you know, we've been, of course, the baseball and the award, but same like I'm ours, and we have favoritism on some of this stuff. So other than that, other than that, we've got a Story County House of Crest month here meeting this afternoon, I expect to see you in the audience. And we have some good things going forward on the smart committees in regards to housing here. We have some data, too, but we rounded up on ourselves very well this time. It was very nice to start the day being greeted by two monitors at the back door.
Oh, my.
And that, you know, it's the best time of the season, and you're seeing success as they return to us, I hope. And I just would have to say, you have nothing more to throw in?
So I'm one of those that I love every season, but I appreciate it in one moment. And it's like the All-Stars get here. So for me, just two quick ones, both Thursday down in Des Moines. And if you guys might have anything standing by, my state official mental health and disability services. That has been a fascinating group to be part of as we try to figure out how to best provide services in perfect a system. And I'm trying really hard to lend my problem solving voice to that. And then the second one is the policy board for ISAC meeting again at 2:00 on Thursday just to try to finalize what's going forward for the state this year on behalf of ISAC. And so looking forward to both of those.
So you guys discussed it, and then you put it forward, and then the members vote, right? So you guys settled that your policy group will put together what you feel the final platform should be, and then they come out to us, so vote, or you guys are good then at that point?
Yeah, we're good at that point, but there's a secondary group at ISAC that finalizes things that are necessary.
All right.
But it won't come back out to members. But that'll happen, and the ISAC, ISAC, anything further? If not, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
And second.
Although, members, stay out.